Bring the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order. All three selectmen are present, town administrator is present. Leo Martell videotaping for benefit of the public and Lynda Nickerson will be uploading those. We have our town clerk here and along with our Judy Dalkin, our tax collector, and Woody Bone, the transfer station supervisor. So I'm gonna do the old business first, which would be the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of April 1st as amended.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Too late.
Too late.
See how we're doing, Mike? Discussions afterwards.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of April 1st.
I'll second the motion. Motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Alright.
Make a motion to seal those minutes.
Oh, perfect. I wanted to do that, Bob. Good. The motion's been made and amended to seal them, all in favor?
Aye.
You need a second to the amendment.
I'll second the amendment to seal it.
Thank you. Now, aye.
Aye.
Aye on the amendment and I'll give you an aye on the motion.
We have a second non-public?
No. Uh, yes, we do.
Here we do.
I'll make a motion to approve the 8:45 PM non-public minutes of April 1st.
Okay, motion's been made, any...
I'll second it and then I'll amendment to seal those minutes.
I'll second amendment to seal those minutes.
All in favor?
Motion on the amendment, first, sir.
Aye on the amendment.
Aye on the amendment.
Aye on the amendment.
Now you can do this.
Motion's been made, say all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, mine are all signed up. Okay, that takes care of all of those meeting minutes. We did, and now I'm gonna open up for a quick public comment here and make sure to state your name and address if you could.
Alright, I have to... Lynda Landry, town clerk? I'm not sure if the public comment's gonna... If the mask, the governor's dropping the mask mandate is gonna come up for public comment or if it's gonna be part of your meeting?
Uh, we can start it now on the... Our agenda's not that busy tonight on our...
On your seasonal schedule?
Yeah, so we can go ahead and hit that right away under town business. So, um, what Lynda's references is, uh, the state of New Hampshire, the governor has taken away the mask mandate and at some point we're gonna have to discuss at a town level when we're gonna not require them in here and make it more of a voluntary use. Still keeping the social distancing for a while and I wanted to open that up for discussion with the selectmen. We may as well let the department heads chime in on it as well. I'd like to try and make it so it's uniform through our office instead of having it both ways if we can, so.
There's no way not to, right?
Yeah. Bob, do you have anything on that, Mike? What was your thought? I know we've started the soft open process here with having the doors unlocked.
Well, I think any outdoor work, I think transportation, we can take the mask off. I think I'm comfortable with that. If that can be effective, what the governor's saying. I think I'm willing to compromise a little bit on the building. Bob, what do you think? We don't necessarily have to go rush into it.
I'll say this.
For the record, Dunbarton is up this week as far as the number of faces.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're up this week. It's up around the state as far as hospitalizations and people that are still sick. It's one choice when you're looking at statistics and you wanna move forward and get things going. But I know that I just made a reservation to go all eat and eat Sunday. They have the plexiglass in place and you gotta wear a mask. So I think that individuals elected department heads decide if they want to. Because we heard from one department where there's space far enough away.
Right.
And, you know, and the public can only come to a certain point. But that's not the same case with everybody.
Yeah.
So I think you might wanna let these different departments... Even Woody, if Woody's, you know, if you're, if they're nervous about being confronted because people are passing by their faces all the time. So it's a call that you'll probably have to make talking to other employees there.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a meeting on it Saturday morning.
The, um, the thing is too, I think what Mike was alluding to is, you know, you workers can still have it on down there, but like if the public didn't wanna wear them, wouldn't be a big fight over it.
Because it's business outdoor.
And you're not going down there unloading their trash themselves and they're doing their recyclings themselves. So you're not, you shouldn't be face to face with them all that often. You guys all have the ability to wear the mask there.
I think indoor, I think it's... I'd say let's, uh, let's, I'd say continue what we're doing in this office.
I would say get at least to the end of the month and then revisit it.
That works.
So why don't we do that?
Just revisit it as we watch the numbers and watch whatever.
Yeah.
I would like to, if it would be okay, to get through tax season where more and more people are gonna be coming into my office to require them to wear a mask. Considering the governor has said that this will not limit... He did raise the mask mandate starting tomorrow, but he did say that this will not limit private businesses or cities and towns from requiring masks. And he continued, he urged Rand's sayers to continue to wear masks because the pandemic is not over.
Yeah, he just didn't want the government to require you to and that's the same thing we're trying to do as a government body here. Trying to decide when it's gonna be, you know, we free out and leave it to the public.
That's correct, but you do have, you are putting people at risk that have to wait on the public. If you are allowing them, if you're allowing the public to come in and not wear a mask.
I think what Lynda was alluding to earlier, it, the thing is, it's kinda like, uh, I take it as a personal front that go out and get the mandate, get the shot, and then you'd be protected. Well, I signed up for it. A lot of people in here signed up for it right away to get a shot. And now they're saying, I can't transmit it because I have the shot, but I gotta wear the mask. It's, there is no science behind it for that. But the thing is, does that mean we're gonna go ahead and ask everyone to show papers? No, we're not. We're not showing baskets. No, we're not. So it's hard to tell, um, someone coming in, so I, I feel for you that way, but I think among workers, they should be able to take their mask off if they got vaccinations and they feel comfortable working with each other.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm talking about the public coming into this building.
Yeah, and I think it's...
When you can have a lot of people coming in, one after one after one, coming into either register vehicles or...
And that's, that's where I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, okay.
I'm really agreeing with you and the only thing is, I think, um, as we approach...
I mean, nobody likes to wear them. I don't like them.
But as the numbers go up significantly by Memorial Day.
They're predicting over 90% will be inoculated by May 31st.
Right, and that's, that's the day that's sticking in my mind right now.
When are your taxes due? You're talking...
July?
July 1st.
Yeah, I don't know where to keep it till July.
But the thing is, I wanna see, I wanna see the numbers go up as far as immunizations.
Yeah, we'll watch it, but that's a long way down.
I don't have a problem watching it. I don't have a problem. I'm not saying that, you know, if there's no cases anywhere that I, that people need to wear a mask, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that I, I do have some concerns. I had, I take care of vulnerable people.
And I agree with you, this week, this week...
And even though, and you can still be a carrier even if you've been vaccinated. So in that respect, considering I have, you know, a 91-year-old, a 98-year-old, an 85-year-old and, you know, that I care for, I do have some concerns about that.
And I, I agree with you and I think especially this week when we see Dunbarton is almost a certain high level.
13 people.
Right, and so the thing is, we're at, we're at a, so what's a significant higher level than we ever been.
Something that we can, can consider when the time comes is to limit the number of patrons in that middle room. Some towns are doing that, no more than two people in line at a time. So summertime, which would be your tax time.
Yeah.
We could limit that and other people, the rest of the line will have to wait outside. So that could be, may be a compromise we could work with.
Especially if we're implementing the social distancing. You see the, the mark? Puts that person at the door.
Right.
Then that person coming in will have to respect that social distance and wait outside.
Keep in mind what the story I told you last time about the guy who came right up to... I got two people come right up to the person in front of me. One struck up a conversation just a couple of feet away. And then one came in with no mask and went shoulder to shoulder with the man in front of me and slid his paperwork under the plexiglass and said, "This is for Lynda." I mean, he bumped into the guy sliding his paper and he came in this door with no mask, even though he had called the day before and I specifically told him, "You need to put it in the drop box."
Yeah, some people always gonna be, I would say...
You can't do anything about that.
Yeah, considerate. I think that's too bad, but I think we, we should approach as cautiously as we move forward.
I, I have to say that most of the people that I have dealt with have all been... I can't say most, I say all of them have been very considerate.
Yeah. And, you know, we don't, we have meeting every other week now, so this one we looked at for two more weeks and then we'll look at it again, you know, we'll probably from now on will look at it. At least hit on it what we need every time.
If you guys have Dunbarton have no cases for a couple of weeks.
I, yeah, I would like to see everybody not have, you know?
If you would mind.
I mean, everybody's tired of it.
When you know you're gonna discuss it again, if you could let the department... Us, you know, Judy and I know, and I don't think Donna minds one way or the other, but...
Yeah, like I said, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we'll probably be discussing it because we're only meeting every two weeks, so there should be enough changes every two weeks now to keep looking at it.
So within the building itself, if the person is vaccinated, they can walk around here without a mask? Is that what you're...
That's what I'm saying.
But if they're not, how would anybody know? Because you've got HIPAA.
Well, the thing is, uh, among coworkers, you should be able to talk among each other and let each other know.
Not with HIPAA.
Well, that's, that's not true.
No?
If I want you to know, then I can tell you.
Well, of course.
Then that doesn't violate HIPAA.
Of course, of course, but if they don't wanna tell ya, I mean, you can't ask. I'm saying you can't ask.
Right, 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 right. No, I thought you were saying that, me saying it violates HIPAA and that's not...
Well, the thing is, COVID's gonna be here next year too. It's not gonna wait.
I know, I know.
It's gonna be like the flu and a lot of people don't realize it. They're already talking about, we're gonna probably need booster shots by the end of the year. And so we're gonna, we can't be wearing these things forever.
Oh, I agree. I agree with that.
And the thing is, once we get to a point where the cases settle down, the numbers of immunizations go up as reported by the state, I think we can, we can, we can work. I'll be honest, I worked with Lynda this week and the thing is, we're looking at each other with a mask. Lynda, did you get your vaccination? Yes. Did I, did you get yours? Yes. We took our masks off, kept some social distancing, but we worked.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And I think we should keep it as a case by case basis. You don't have to, I, I'm not gonna force anyone to, you know, show me your papers.
Of course, of course.
But the thing is, uh, we were comfortable enough that we were working in the same office. We took our masks off, kept some social distancing, but we both know that we were immunized. And it was two weeks beyond the final, I mean, after the final immunization too. And that's how it should be informal. And it should be, if you're comfortable and be sure that information is fine. But Lynda was looking at me and I'm looking at her, we were like dying with these masks on. Would you agree?
Couldn't read what we were doing.
Yeah, and...
But at, but at some point, further down the road, I know, you know, those doors will be open to the public like they used to be. You know, so I wanna be able, make sure you know that's our end game here, you know?
Well, of course, I think that's the end game everywhere, isn't it?
And I, I think we're getting closer.
Yeah.
But we're not there yet.
Nope.
Especially with the numbers in Dunbar, as they reflect to this day.
You know, that, that's the only point that I certainly wanna be, go back to normal, of course.
And we do have our plexiglass in place too and we do have our masks on, so.
Of course.
After we take the masks off, we can still enforce social distancing, we can still keep...
And we're gonna keep the plexiglass.
I was gonna say, we should keep them, so.
Yeah, Hope and I talked about that. We actually, we'd like to get something more permanent at some point for, for ours.
Agreed.
Just because of winter, this is nice.
I think we have consensus in this room across the department heads. Would you think, everybody, we're thinking about the right, are we thinking the right way?
I think so.
I think so.
I think as far as, uh, because I keep getting asked about the swap shop. I'm telling people June, potentially July, we want it open, but, you know, just like you said, you know, when this, maybe when this building's back to full capacity, then we'll go back to full capacity. You know, and then we'll start helping people and that sort of thing. But I think in that aspect, we all need to kinda stay on the same level. You know, us opening up down there and possible opening here, but as far as the masks, like I said, I'll discuss it Saturday morning with the crew and see what they...
You know, Woody, it's, it's kinda difficult because someone comes in, they're wearing no mask. And the thing is, am I supposed to stop, am I supposed to stop them and say, "Put your mask on" and confront them? Your crew shouldn't be confronting them, in my opinion.
And what we've done is, and I've asked a few people, most everybody has a mask or they'll see you with a mask and they'll go, "Oh," and they'll go back and be able to get it. And I'll say, it's only happened a couple of times, I say, "Do you need a mask?"
That's what I do, yeah.
And, "Oh, I'll go get it," and they go back to their vehicle, get it. So it hasn't been a real big issue.
Great, great.
You know, and we don't push the issue because we're not the mask police, so.
Exactly.
I, I don't think it's uncommon to walk off without putting it... I mean, we forget. I forget and, you know, you go to the walk down, you get half way to the bathroom and you're like, "Oh, my God."
My better half's walking in the supermarket the other day. Like she's halfway into the supermarket and then she realizes I have no mask.
Yeah.
Back to the car, get the mask and come back in.
Right.
Or you can buy one at the courtesy counter.
Oh, you go to, you shop at Market Vast, though.
Okay.
Okay, I'm moving on to the next subject then.
Alright, thank you for your time.
This might be on to Lynda, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna discuss the primary election date. It's Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, and setup will be four o'clock on the 19th.
No, the setup will be, uh, that's the tentative one. The school knows we're gonna be over there. And the thing is, Woody's gonna coordinate with Rainey directly.
Do it earlier or later?
Probably earlier.
Yeah.
And the thing is, it's just a few, uh, in fact, the moderator was suggesting maybe four booths and some tables. We doesn't need that many.
Yeah.
And, uh...
I don't even know if we need four booths. Everybody's using those tables pretty well now, but...
We have to have, by law, we have to have a certain ratio of booths or tables, yes.
So I would, at this point, I would say just have Woody coordinate with Rainey for the exact times. And the thing is, Lynda's gonna, Lynda's gonna have some stuff to pick up, not as much as in the past. So I'll let you, I was gonna, let's hand it off to Woody and let him just make the coordination directly with Rainey from Monday afternoon.
And we're hoping, just on that same subject, we're hoping, uh, after this election, stuff will, should go to that building. We've gotta level it up, that's kind of a problem we're having. Like I told you before, I talked to the company about the door.
Yeah.
So we're gonna level it off a little better because now that the ground's settled a little bit, we'll level it back up, see how the door goes and if things are good. Because we don't want it partially sealed, we want it sealed so no water's in there and then go from there. And then at some point, um, once we start to move stuff in there, I'll come back and see, I'd like to get a, you know, maybe a shelf and some, they call it E-track. And that way these booths will be secured to the walls so they're not falling on anyone and a shelf to put the items on so they don't get damaged kinda thing, you know? So, but when we get to that point, I'll come back and see you.
Yeah, and we'll have everything in one spot at that point.
Want to do it after this election or the June election? Because remember, we've got another one coming up in June.
Well, I think if he has time to level it up, we should.
Yeah, we're, the plan is, if, the plan is, uh, next Thursday, if everything goes right, we're gonna work on leveling that container. We've had a bunch of projects, we've just been knocking the list off and that is now the ground's all going.
So you'll be putting them someplace until Thursday?
Yeah, we're gonna go back over here. The librarian has made us a nice little spot up in the front. We don't have to go up and down the stairs, everything fits right in a little corner.
Oh, perfect. Alright.
So I'll, I'll leave that in your hands, Woody, to meet with the...
Yes.
Okay, and the thing is, the election, the counting is gonna be over much earlier because the anticipated numbers are gonna be low. And the only thing, um, I had a voter ask, I'll be honest, it was my better half. She suggested that we do put a sign, put it on the voting board because there's no, there's a lot of people out there just don't know what's going on in town as far as the voting, the primary and all that kind of stuff.
We put the elections on our website.
On the website.
Yeah, but I think, you know, we don't wanna create a big crowd, but then again, you don't wanna disenfranchise anybody.
Well, it is on the website and not everybody drives through the center all the time, but maybe the school would put it on their marquee too. Or you could see that one.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a question here for you.
Yeah, not a question, um. The problem is, uh, I talked to a lot of people and they, they're surprised we have a website in town. So, and these are people that are computer people. So, you know, it's probably a good idea to put it on the sign, you know?
Hit, hit all angles.
Yeah.
Are we all updated on that website?
Not yet, we haven't gone live.
Okay.
Still working on it.
You know, it's not that we're advertising for people to come in, but we wanna make sure that people know about the voting. It's, it's democracy, you gotta be honest.
Anything else about the election you wanna say, Lynda, before I go on to the next subject?
Uh, yes. Uh, you three all know that you're gonna need to be there. I think Rainey had put that in his email to you. And I just wanna make you aware that we are down two supervisors of the checklist and it's an incompatible office with selectmen, so you won't be able to fill in. I did talk to Janet, she and Sue are trying to get a couple of people to do some pro temp, but we might be maybe calling on your wife if she's available.
I talked to that couple you were training at the last election.
One of them's working all day Tuesday and I don't know how available the other one is. It's really their, it's their baby to, to fill it. But if you can think of anybody and you wanna think about some names, I know they'd be very grateful for that.
Quite for sure.
Okay, and I think that is all I have for elections.
Okay, see you Tuesday.
See you Tuesday. Oh, and we counted the ballots, Mike and Rainey and I.
And you gotta send around a lunch, uh...
And send around a lunch menu.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, the next item on the town business is Linda portion. I was approached when I was in signing checks last week in Donna's office here, Allison was there and she had asked a question about using the town's permit for mailing of stuff for the 501(c)(3) organization in town, which is...
Historical Society.
Dunbarton Historical Society.
Yeah.
So that's not a town organization. I told her at the time, I didn't think it was gonna be a big issue. And talking further with Lynn, she says there are some issues maybe with it, so I wanted to review that with the other selectmen and see what you guys thought and have Lynn give us a little background on it.
I'm, I'm a little concerned only because it sets a precedent where they're out of the 501(c)(3)'s around town. And before you know it, they're all gonna be asking us. And if you, if you say yes to one, it's kinda hard to say no to another one. So I don't think we should be going down that road. And it does take, somebody must have to supervise some of this, so.
I think Lynn has to, that's the part I didn't realize.
So that's, you know, that's, I don't think they need the extra work on their plates. So that's, that's the position I'm taking is, you know, I don't wanna set a precedent so that another 501(c)(3)'s comes in and said, "Can we use the town permit?" Because if it's a 501(c)(3)'s that's within the organization, which there's one with the, uh...
The restoration, right? They're 501(c)(3)'s?
They have a 501(c)(3)'s and there, there's a committee in town that does that. So, you know, I, I don't think we should be mixing our, our postage with someone else's postage and setting a precedent for other organizations.
Has that 501(c) ever used it for postage when they did that original law?
I don't think so. I think they always use their own funds.
Because I know that, I'm not, they're talking about using their own funds as well.
Right.
Just using our permit number because it's at a reduced rate.
But I think, I can make a quick call to the post office, but I was under the assumption that when I tried to use the schools because they're nonprofit, um, the post office said we couldn't piggyback on theirs before we applied, we paid for our own permit. So my understanding is that if you're a 501(c)(3)'s, you can apply for this postal permit at a reduced rate for annual fee, but it's probably because they don't have mailers but every four or five years and...
Why don't we help them out, Lynn, and maybe try and make that phone call for them? Because if they can already get a reduced rate, there's no need to be using ours.
Yeah, yeah, I'll find out.
If that takes just a phone call from me, would you mind doing that?
No.
I, I tend to agree with Bob, we can't, I don't think we should be mixing the private organizations with the town business, with town government.
Yeah. I didn't realize Lynn had to process them. I thought they could issue our number, but Lynn told me she was gonna process it also. Yeah, so if they get a reduced rate being a 501(c), um, and it's probably the same rate if I had to guess, you know?
Yeah.
Because it's a nonprofit, so might even be cheaper, who knows?
Yeah, because the school gets a different rate from us.
Okay. Yeah, if we can do that and, uh, we'll get back to them and just let them know that. Alright, moving on, um, mowing bids are not here yet.
Oh, they are, they're on the ground, sorry.
I noticed they weren't in the, that's why I was asking, they weren't in the bulletin. So we're gonna review the town mowing bids. They were due on April 14th by 3:00 PM, and we're on the 15th. I didn't think we had it because it was not in.
Oh, they are.
Oh, you had them here?
You gotta sign those.
I was gonna say, she's going to get them all.
You gotta sign those.
Can you do a sign on all of them?
No.
I seen that and what that was.
Hey, that's all he needs is rip it open. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so just so you're aware of it, um, I advertised this in the Concomitator.
Okay.
Posted it on the, in the website, on the town website, and then I mailed out...
Okay, this one says four copies. I'll hand you guys each copy.
Twelve envelopes with the RFP in it and we received two back.
Mike, here's one, Bob.
Thank you.
I got another one here for you, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's review the first one and I'll open up the other one. This is from ASAP Landscaping Design, which is on Ogden Road in Boe. Are they the ones that do the cemetery?
They are.
They are, okay. How long was this out for, Lynn?
Um, just over two weeks, I think.
Guys, if you want, why don't we review these and not state any numbers publicly just yet just in case they need to resubmit it?
Yeah.
You guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
And just so you're aware of it, this was, um, RFP was reviewed by the school chairman, school board chairman. He put in his, um, recommendations for the care of the school grounds, so this does include all the town properties, the, um...
Beach field, town office, some color.
Beach field, yeah, and then all of the school grounds.
And I see he's got plenty of, um, references on the back of that. Let me open up the next one and get you guys your copies of that one.
The best reference is right outside the board here.
Yeah. This is on BNS Landscaping on Mansion Road in Dunbarton. Just one field, Bob. And Lynn? Did we state how many months this was for in here?
Yeah.
So I can see this apple for apples? Do some math, I'll get it.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly what you're doing.
Alright.
Contract begins April 16th through December 31st.
Um, April 16th.
Eight months.
December.
So the first year obviously is less than the second year. So they, on page five, it says, "Spring and fall cleanup, spring cleanup shall be done as soon as conditions reasonably allow, with fall cleanup completed no later than November 15th." So that's probably how they base their numbers on.
Lynn?
Yeah?
I'm gonna, um, close these bids up for now and give them back to you. I think that there was a calculation. and give them back to you, I think that there was a calculation on the bottom of the bids that was incorrect.
Which one?
Um, I think it was on the first one, to be honest with you. But we'll do the math separate, and that's why I didn't wanna announce anything.
Okay.
I think it was tallied up the monthly rate as a yearly rate at the end of their total, and I think that's, um.
You think the, on, on
Yeah.
The separate, the, as a monthly bill?
You know, that's a monthly.
You think that's, that's a monthly bill right here, or is that total?
No, I think it's monthly because it's read to be monthly if you read how it's labeled. Okay, so then I think the tally is wrong, so until we get clarification, Lynn.
Okay.
Let's put them back in the envelopes here. If you guys wanna return all of them to me, I'll put them back in the original envelope.
And we should, Bob, did you see that, the difference here?
That's what I'm willing to.
If I just look at the total, Bob, on the pages, there's an error on one or the other, and so it makes a large enough discrepancy, I'd like them to relook at them and send them back to us, okay?
Right, with some guidance.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm thinking with the totals on the first bid.
I'll, don't talk about it.
No, no, I understand.
But I'll review it with you, with Lynn.
Okay.
One I believe did a monthly and one did a yearly.
yearly, that's the way.
But I'm not sure that's the case, and we have to go, we asked for it monthly, so we have to make sure the tally is correct.
In other words, you're thinking that's, it looks like it could be yearly, but we need to know if it is.
Yeah, it's labeled as yearly to us monthly, so.
Okay.
Let's take them back and I'll put them in the envelope.
So we're asking the first bid if they're actually holding that as a yearly cost plus spring and fall cleanup?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
If it is, it's a that's interesting.
So anyway, we'll.
The thing is, on the issue, Dave, is, um, April is here, do we wanna wait two weeks before we get?
No, no, we're gonna call them, as once they clarify that, we have the bids.
Right, right, well, what I'm saying, when can we make, I don't wanna make a decision two weeks from now, I'd like to make a decision sooner than later.
Yeah, I just, um, you know what I'll do is, uh, once we have the numbers, I'll call around for consensus of the board so we get rolling on it.
Okay, well, maybe we have a five, five minute meeting, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you might wanna have a meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Cause they from, um, doing consensus for.
Yeah, but I I think a five minute meeting, we could just meet.
What, what's your opinion, keep them sealed up?
Yeah.
As soon as we get the information, I I think it's imperative we do it, move out smartly.
Okay.
April's here.
Yeah.
Although we're getting snow tonight, but go for it.
If you wanna, go on to the Kimball Pond.
Snow blowing in that, too?
If you wanna go make a phone call.
I can, I have your number.
So she makes a phone call, we might be allowed on it tonight.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right, I'm gonna move on to the Kimball Pond update. I wanna thank Woody for doing the hauling for us. Was it six or five?
Six of them.
Six of them, and the sixth one was partially full.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, it was full.
It says construction debris.
Yes.
Yeah, so Woody hauled them all this week, and, uh, so for the update, the house has been razed, the um, what's it called, the cheese shed has been razed, and the wood shed on the side slash garage has been razed, so um, all of the debris has gone off site, and Jeff has begun his backfilling process. And one of the biggest reasons, I took some pictures today. Uh, we had talked about this earlier, about leaving the foundation sticking up, you know, a foot or foot, half of the ground so they could see the old location. But when I was down, the basement looked so nice downstairs that I thought it would be a nice gesture to have that, you know, some of the granite showing there, and you have a foundation this wide, and you know, almost like some of the old farms that have foundations left out of well, and relooking at this foundation, apparently Cy Odette stopped by and it was the original house location. The fire had cracked the granite into a bunch of chunks. For some reason, they put the nice looking side on the inside, the the bad side of the granite on the outside, and it's all split up. And then there was cement and bricks and everything stuck to the top of them. And then, uh, you can look at how skinny the walls are on the rest of them, they tapered the walls up to a little tiny so we're basically looking at rubble, we're not looking at a foundation, so, uh, Jeff's thought is to knock the top foot and a half in and bury it all level and just have the ground there and not show the foundation location. Which is what was supposed to be done originally, I just thought it'd be nice to see the old foundation site, but it's too, um, it's too rubbly. Three sides out of it um, have all but one little piece of granite, and the front had the granite on it, and the it's not even worth saving for a piece of step, it's just.
It looks like rubble.
Yes.
We saw it by the back door where it was all concrete.
Yes. And it and it narrows up to, you know, like this wide, it's not even a, not even a stone wide, so.
I can ask a question on behalf of the transfer station, um, we have to pay for construction debris, and we get money for the demolition, transfer some money to his budget.
That's right.
And it'd be about, there's, I have quite a bit of labor in there, too, what I did is I figured everything out, I'll give you the totals.
Yeah.
But I would, cause you're looking at about originally I thought about eight thousand, but it won't be that now, cause it's not as much material as I thought. I never tore a house down before, so I didn't know.
Yeah.
It's looking like it's gonna be just on my side, clean fuel, labor, it's about, gotta be around the five thousand bracket.
Yeah, I mean, we have money, we have money in the budget for it, Woody said it's not coming out of your budget.
Okay.
And we do that in advance.
I I just wanna make sure it was some money they transferred back to the.
I appreciate it.
Lynn, did you wanna see the picture on it?
I did see that.
Yeah, that's, oh yeah, I did show it to you, I'm just, it's all, uh
Yep.
It's basically gonna look like rubble and look worse because then he has to go and pick, but by doing this, he can take all of the, the little bit of trash and put it in the hole too and make a nice clean job. And he's got his dozer that's looking, gonna look nice.
For audit purposes, just if you prepare a written document for us for the next meet, for two weeks from now, that way we just have the money transferred to your budget, and we, that will be an auditing tool.
I can do that, I'll get, I'll get it for Lynn to find out exactly what wording has to be on there.
I know that has to be too extravagant, but just to, just so we cover your costs, and so as we transfer the money from that insurance upfront.
Yeah, just something for an audit.
Right.
So, yeah, that's good, appreciate you doing that hauling this week, cause Jeff wanted to keep it rolling and get it backfilled so nobody'd get hurt with the debris, and having the debris all gone really helps out.
Yeah.
Um, I stopped by to see Woody when when Mike was up there, and that worked out good. So that's the update on Kimball Pond Road, so that that project's looking good, there are two, um, pine trees that are completely rotted, ready to fall on the road, well, Jeff has his equipment there, I asked him to cut them and take them down and put them in the back, there's like a brush pile in the back, I told him just to put them in there. It's got his equipment there, they're gonna fall on the road, and he's gonna have to bring his equipment back there to clean them up, so.
Do it now than later.
Yeah, but then it comes out of his budget, no?
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, but there'll be some money out of his budget too that we can, uh, well, is he working as a road agent or a?
No, he's, uh, he's treating the the town, uh, like he does on his regular road agent budget.
Okay.
Just charging us for the equipment by the hour.
Okay.
So, no profit, no overhead or any of that, it's just a town job.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna go into some items on the mailbox only cause I've, we've got a little time here, I'll keep this meeting rolling if I can. Um, the first thing is, we have an email from the chief of police, um, Dan Scuttle. And it was in reference to making one of his officers, uh, moving up.
Acting sergeant.
As an active sergeant, Brian Tyler, so that they would have better understanding when they're patrolman out there, uh, who to listen to, so.
And for the record, uh, the chief assured with his department the succession plan.
Yeah. Okay, great, so yeah, we have that email from him. We have an email response on a trespass complaint. Chris Rublott gave us a copy on it as well. On another road in Dunbarton. Get them all over town, huh? Okay, the next one is a request from Cubstout Pack seventy-five uh, for fundraising to install and maintain flag placement and service the flags throughout the town. Uh, we talked about this a little bit last week, do you guys have any problem or issue with that?
I'm still trying to figure out what they're doing. It's, it's not clear what they're doing.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I think they're talking about these little flags, but I don't really know either, cause it doesn't clear when I say that.
And so, I think it's, I I'm all, and I wanna listen to the proposal, but I don't understand the proposal, if they could just get us some more clarification what they wanna do in town, I'd be more than, more than happy to entertain.
All right, let's ask Lynn to get clarification. Okay, we had an email this week from the garden club wanting to do, uh, mulch around the, um, library slash town hall. Uh, Lynn went ahead and, uh, it's been several years since we've had this done, so Lynn went ahead and got some bark mulch scheduled, I think she said, uh, ten yards. Last time was April twenty nineteen. So I think that was a good move, Bob, I think, uh, make that look a little fresher out there. They spread that out through a few years, and I think got their money's worth. The N R R A update would like the town to update the voting representative from Dunbarton. That's you. Woody?
Right.
Is it an email from the town on a letter here or something?
That's the first I've even heard of this.
Okay.
Um, they just sent it to us, it's in our email here. You wanna take this documentation and, uh, I guess you don't have to, we'll fill it out for you. You wanna be the representative like you always have been, right?
Correct.
Okay. We'll let Lynn know, yes.
Is it the N R A or is it, uh?
It's Northeast Recovery, uh, Resource Recovery Association, N R R A.
Yeah, no, no, I was thinking.
Not the National Resource Association.
No, no, I was thinking, uh.
It is a little different one than the other one you are involved in, isn't it?
Right, I was thinking, uh, Concord Regional Solid Waste.
Right, right, that's what I thought. Didn't we get all the money back from the lottery?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
There could be some more down the road.
Be another feather in your cap, which under this one too.
There you go.
Okay, uh, the next thing is just the email in reference to the, um, election coming up. And it's from Rainey, and, uh, the election passed this one that's currently, he's gonna ask John Trotter or Fred, if John is not available to do the next election in June, June eighth.
If John has a new job, and you may not be able to take off the entire day.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
But the thing is, uh, John could come in the evening, see the management of the, uh, of the election county. That's what I was thinking.
Um, and here's the email from Rainey in reference to start it a little earlier um, at the school for setup, Woody.
Okay. What time, what time did he?
Uh, he put two thirty, but if that wasn't available, he'd, he'd come in at four and do it, so.
Two thirty's good?
Yeah, we'll probably do two thirty.
Okay, that means probably at two o'clock, I should pick up.
He said they have an access at two thirty.
So.
Yeah, we might be, it, yeah, we won't need that much stuff, so, that's what I gotta just find out, the biggest thing with Rainey is to find out what he actually needs.
Yeah.
So we can get everything together, and then go over and get it locked out.
Okay.
I could get ahold of her, she's gonna give me her response in writing, she did say that she was looking at the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup, and misinterpreted that is for the full season.
So that amount is a full season, though?
Full season, eight months, yeah, because the way it's described is eight months through November. And I just got it, so I'll print it here behind me.
That changes everything.
It's a big difference.
Yeah, because, uh, you know, before, it looked very one sided, but I don't know if you do that.
It does add up correctly, though.
You adding up, Mike?
I was just looking at the top line, was this, see, on one bid would've been that much?
Right.
Vice, um, that's where they made you class, it's right there. Thing is, there is a Dunbarton advantage of being a Dunbar, uh, company, but this is, uh, this gone, this is a little bit beyond.
You know, a long time ago, we talked about doing that and giving a five percent, but I, I had suggested other communities give like a five percent, uh, range, and, uh, it's a little further than five percent.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, um, it's weird because you go the opposite, a hundred and eighty degrees different for the, uh, the spring cleanups.
Yeah, I I think it's, it's an overhang.
You see what I mean on the spring cleanup?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's double.
You would think it would be a, you would think, uh, it would be a, well, it is about a month's rate if you do that.
Yeah, you know, yeah. All depends what kinda spring you have and how much cleaning up they gotta do, too.
Well.
But I mean.
If you look at the rate per hour, it is a little bit less, too, so I think we're good there, too. So.
That's our email. Correction.
Okay, let me read this to make sure. Looking for my glasses, and they're on my face. Perfect. Okay. I'll make a motion then, that we accept the bid, which is the lower bid for the two year process from A S A P Landscaping. And, uh, instead of stating any prices, I'm just gonna reference, uh, their bid package that was due on April fifteenth of this year. And, uh, we'll let their bid package speak for itself, and the total, I guess I will state that
What are you gonna?
For year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, the total is twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
You wanna debate it?
Uh, anybody have anything?
I don't think this question is decided.
I I just wanna say, uh, thank you, Dave and Lynn, for making it happen tonight, because April's here, and I don't, I don't wanna wait two more weeks.
Yeah, once you said that, I think it was a good idea to make an act on it, so I, uh.
So thank you.
So most have made in second, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just comment? Because they have another department that they've been maintaining, they have really, really done a really good job with all of the cemeteries, from what we can see.
If you, if, what I said about five minutes earlier, their best recommendation is right outside his door.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Lynn, you can call them back tomorrow, let them know.
Yeah.
I wanna put your bids in here, Bobby, I keep.
Yeah, no, you can have them.
Oh, is there one, there's, you're gonna sign one?
Well, I guess I should sign one, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll scan that out.
And they can start?
I'll send it to them tonight.
Spring cleanup, it was here. With less snow tonight.
Can you, uh, know that, um, we would like to get on the spring cleanup as quick as possible?
Yeah.
And if they wanna start at the school, I'm fine with that, cause I think most everything out here is.
But just let them know about the mulch that the garden club's doing, not that it be conflicting?
Okay, that's good, I'll let them know.
We have a line on here, too, Bob, does. Can you also, um, give one both copies of this? And let them know which one we went with and signed? And if they have any issues, to let us know. Okay, Lynn, I had started in the, um, mailbox items to keep things rolling.
Just one second, Lynn, could you also include the email that you got back from her?
Yeah, absolutely.
As part of that, just in case.
Yeah.
Questions come up, you know, after a year's time.
Yeah, she's gonna clarify her bid with her, too. Yeah, she's gonna clarify her bid with her too.
Yeah.
Lean, on, um, Cub Scout Pack Seventy Five.
Yep.
Uh, we don't have any ordinances, but we'd like to get some clarification on the flags, the size, how big it is.
What exactly they're doing.
Have you gone through Bow and seen all the, uh, the flags, the other, now, near there, it's really very pretty, some neighborhoods have just.
Their little flag, Lean, tell us.
Yeah, they're, they're not a full size, they're probably, do you have the ones I'm talking about, do you see them in Bow on the, the mailboxes? They'll attach it to the mailbox, and they'll have it sticking out, it's probably about three feet, I don't know, it's not a full sized flag, but.
On everybody's home mailboxes?
Well, if they order it and buy it, then they take it down, and then they put it back up for another season and.
Installing it to flag placement services, much like flags across.
I can get more clarification.
Yeah, what, what they're, yeah, who are they soliciting, they're collecting money from, I guess, private individuals?
Yeah, they must go and ask them if they want to pay for a flag, and then these Cub Scouts put them up there and down.
Yeah, what are the postal regulations saying about this on the, on the mailboxes?
Well, you own your mailbox, so they don't have anything.
Yeah, but, so.
I mean, it's not attached directly to it, but it's near the post of a, um, more information.
Interesting.
What happens if they get broken or stolen?
And the other thing is, on this Northeast Recovery.
They say they maintain it.
Resource Recovery Association, we talked to Woody, we're gonna put him on that.
Okay, did you fill it out in the back or not?
I didn't, I couldn't just let you.
I'll fill it out.
Doesn't look like an official signature anywhere.
Yeah, I'll just fill it out then.
Okay.
Let you know, you're patient.
Uh, we already talked about this earlier, but it was the Governor's new to mask mandate update.
Rainey needs an update as far as what we're deciding, I'd, I'd say we recommend the same mask protocol we followed at the last election.
Yep.
Yeah, because we're, you're not at sixty percent yet.
Yeah.
You have, uh, you have sixty percent of people that receive a first shot, included with the ones who received the second. And that you're really safe when it's seventy five percent or more.
Right.
They're looking for eighty percent, you know, would be a better number, but we're not, so, we're not quite there yet, I don't think, you know. I, I think we might as well be prudent, because the numbers are going up, and we don't know who it is that's triggering the numbers, right?
Um, great. Yeah, okay, going on to the next item in the mailbox, um, get an email from Donna White requesting a person with a sound system for meetings being held at the community center. What we found at the planning board is that, uh.
You guys have big projects coming up, and you're.
Yeah, we have big projects coming up with the golf course and whatnot, and what happens is, we have, um, the big sound system, when there's few people, echoes way too much. And especially, we're trying to do Zoom with people between echoing and walking up to the mic, and, um. So, she's got a, a two mic system here that's much smaller with its own amplifier and speakers, and she'd like to try and buy this with our COVID money, it's not much money, we're talking a couple of hundred dollars. And, um, I was looking for consensus by her email, and I don't think it'd be all star email, did you get the email?
I did, I just wanted, you, you just put, you liked me, I didn't understand what was going on with you.
Yeah, so that's just.
I responded to your email, I just did one, yeah, I sent it back that the, uh, Attorney General frowns on using emails back and forth to do things like that, so if you don't want your whole computer tied up, because that's what happens, is they take over.
Yeah.
Uh, better off, I, that's why I said we could resolve this tonight, you know?
Oh, I didn't see that.
I don't have a problem, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
You did?
Yeah, but I, and I just, I remember.
I thought it said all, because it said Mike Menzies and all, so I, so I figured it must have gone to everybody, but.
I, I, I'd say, uh, with the COVID money, that's kind of like support, that's a thing we're buying in support of the COVID meeting.
Right, and, and my thought to Donna, when I stayed with her, I says, you know, if we do end up using the second floor of that building someday, it'd be a great little system to have for up there, because that's just the right size for a little bit larger meeting, you know?
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, all around it will work.
You know, my, I was all confused, I thought, when I first heard it, I thought it was originally just for the upstairs, I'm saying, I mean, before the, a horse before the cart here, we don't even have the upstairs here.
So, she's all set for what we've done.
Yeah, so that's where my confusion was.
Is that where we're at?
You're supposed to have the horse before the car.
Yeah, or backwards, the cart before the horse. Something like that.
Do you have, from this little association, gave us a couple of bill updates on here and highlighted some bills, um.
I believe I forwarded that to you guys in an email.
I did, and I read most of it from there.
Thing is, in general, I, I find the states is pushing more stuff onto the communities, as far as tax burden. That's unfortunate.
Yep. I just haven't had a chance to look at this, but, uh, we have an update from, uh, Conestration Construction, the chronicles from the company that did the uh, bid on our second floor of our library roof repair. Kind of a nice thing to look at, to see the different projects they're doing through the state, and, uh, I think when that project gets close, we'll let them bid on that again, they seem to do a good job for us. And then we have some reconciliation summary pages requiring our signatures, these are what we went over.
We'll be able to finish the remainder of the year tomorrow, with that two months, and I have some summary packets that I have to put together, so we're pretty much done.
You want to sign here and the cover?
Just that cover sheet?
What about this signature?
Oh, there's two on each packet, yes, one is the checkbooks and one is the, a general fund account.
All right.
And the, uh, Treasurer did review that, and she's approved it.
Okay, you see that one? I'll let you stay right there, I got a couple more here for you. Oh, I have another one here, Lean?
Is it you?
Total five images, Paul.
No, you got a couple, there, I didn't see they were underneath there.
I'll start with these.
Two, two per pack there, Paul. I think we separated the packets on three of them.
Was that what you did?
Yeah, I picked theirs up. This little landscaping.
It's lean. Yep.
The sign one goes back to you, Lean?
Aye.
You had another?
Nope, that's just the plan.
Right here.
You got the sign one right there, okay?
Oh, right there, okay.
All right, I'm gonna open it back up, uh, for public comment, nothing, Leo, you're all set?
Yep.
You're all set for now, Woody?
Yes.
Lean, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything for this week.
Mike, do you have anything for this?
No.
And I'll bring you up to Dave on that elephant armor.
Oh, yeah, I saw the email on that.
Yeah, well, I, uh, contacted and I talked to the individual, it's the salesperson for that, and if your foundations or your sidewalk or your, uh, uh, pad is settling, it won't do anything, because it'll settle with it, and then sooner or later it'll come apart.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, we've got settling there, and I went and looked again, of course, the water's getting inside, and that must be sand underneath that pad. And so it probably freezes, and that's why you have the scalding, the spalding on the outside of the concrete.
Yeah.
And so, I, I really can't see anything we could use it on that two years down the road, we'd have wasted our money.
It's gonna come back on you, yeah.
You know, so, I guess we gotta keep looking for, you know, another.
I do have a good demolition company, and then I do have a good concrete company, so I'll get you them names, Bob. Because I think we'll have to use two separate companies instead of trying to get one to do both. The demolition company's right here, Walton's Demolition, right here, and they do a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
And, uh, MPC Construction is a great concrete slab and form company that does outside slab all the time, so. I think, uh, maybe we'll try and do it in two parts, and at least get the numbers going on it. Uh, we reviewed the mine bids, anything else, Bob, for me?
That should, that's it.
I've given all the updates I have, so, uh.
I'll make a motion then?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I'll make a motion to go in non-public for RSA ninety one dash alpha, paragraph three, going to move two, sub-paragraph A, at the request of the transfer station supervisor.